I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its essence, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, can I take roll call real quick? Uh, roll call is Dan Rondinghaus.
Here.
John Estrich.
You.
Bridget Hayes, I'm here. Earl Moore. Curtis Ward.
Here.
We do have a call. Throw that to Andy.
Prior to this meeting, there was an executive session. The executive session was called pursuant to Indiana Code 5-14-1.5-6.1b to be. For discussion of strategy with respect to initiation of litigation or delegation as either pending or has been directed specifically in writing, as used in this call's litigation includes any judicial or administrative law proceeding under federal or state law. At this time, I would just ask a motion to certify that that's what was discussed in the executive session and there were no further matters discussed.
So moved. I make a motion, certify.
Is there a second?
Second.
Curtis, second. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
As to final action on the executive session, if the town council so desires, we would see the motion to approach the property manager to discuss a possible resolution to this matter.
I make that motion.
John made a motion to approve. Is there a second? Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, first, I want to start off by saying thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I appreciate your attendance and taking time out of your day. Um, but just a little bit about public meetings is, first of all, if everyone can silence your cell phones, I'd really appreciate it. Uh, second, uh, part of the public meeting, this is an official business meeting, so if you would like to be heard, uh, please, uh, I'll call on you and then you come up to the podium right here and you'll have two minutes to speak and then, um, you'll go to the next person. I'll be the timekeeper, so I don't need any help on that from the audience. And what I'd like is for everyone to maintain your professionalism and, uh, just speak with respect and don't interrupt when people talk. And if I ask you to please hold on a minute, uh, the council, I want to confer with the council, uh, please respect that and, uh, allow the council to confer on whatever issue that's, that's at, it's at hand. Uh, the reason why we're here is so the council can help make decisions, uh, to govern and, and part of that is, uh, uh, important to hear from the public, but, um, many of you may not know that, uh, public input at public meetings, um, is not actually in the, um, in the law, is that the public is allowed to come and watch and, uh, record public meetings, but not necessarily speak, uh, unless we have an official public hearing, uh, then the public is allowed to speak at those. Uh, this meeting tonight is a simple public meeting and so, um, by law, you, you don't have to, um, we don't have to allow you to speak, but I think there's, uh, many of us on the board that want public input, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone out there knew the, the Indiana law on that issue. And so, uh, I, we would like public input, but only as long as it's organized and it's respectful. So, uh, I hope we can, um, all come to that tonight. Uh, first, uh, is approval of the minutes of the regular and the special meeting as written. So the regular meeting was October 2nd and the special meeting was, um, October 5th. Could I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
I make that motion.
John made a motion to approve both minutes. Is there a second? Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Total for claims is two hundred and, two hundred and nine thousand dollars, three, two hundred and nine, two hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars and seventy-six cents. Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the claims. Is there a second? Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the approval of payroll. Payroll is fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents, uh, and seventy-six dollars and ninety-six cents of that was overtime. Is there a motion to approve payroll?
I make a call.
Dan made a motion to approve payroll. Is there a second?
Second.
John seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is, uh, Rhonda Herberlin, park display movie viewing.
Yeah, I'm here this evening and went ours to the Brookville Park and Lot. Last year, we presented, um, the Great Pumpkin Charlatan to Town Park and we did so, um, bringing children to the children's, to the community and actually I was going to say children of all ages because there were so many people that came through that were, say, forty and over that appreciated that he was characters and would actually, we would see smiles and say, "Thank you." So, kind of cheerful. Um, this year, we have donations that gave us seventy-five pumpkins from Top Choice Products out of Connersville, Brad Starr, for anyone that might know him. Um, he has, he has donated seventy-five pumpkins to Herberlin, close to three hundred doors. Uh, so we will have a vulnerable harvest and he was happy to share with us. Um, we also have Mike Benz, who is donating fifteen bags of straw. And we have donations from Gildings, we have donations from, uh, probably five or six other businesses here in town that it totally, at this point in time, is a totally free project. No cost at any time, so our joy in doing this is there's no cost to anyone to break through the park. I got my inspiration from New Films, which is the vision of Eli Olahs and downtown Indianapolis, that they offer the, they offer a very similar product, a little more upscale maybe than what we can afford to do, but they charge admission. So, you know, whenever you're not charging admission, maybe you have to scale the project down a little. Um, but we did have Aunt Corn Puffkins last year with lights that lit up them for Halloween and it is more of a children's orientation, so, uh, we try to keep it very, uh, more of an harvest approach than a Halloween approach. So there's nothing scary or, you know, Halloween-ish or really about. Um, so in addition to that, this year, we would like to expand on it because the high school has granted us permission to borrow their projector and their big screen and that they've given this authorization to use inside the park for viewing of the Great Pumpkin Charlatan, the, a Charlatan Brown Thanksgiving and a Charlatan Brown Christmas, which will be aired back to back, an hour and a half for the kids to come and we have, if, again, if this is approved, the library will come and read a story prior to the starting of the film. And this is something that we would like to put on totally free of charge. Everyone is invited in the community. They may be asked to bring their launchers or blankets because, you know, we'll have to spread out as far as parking, possibly the nasty, uh, they have a recommendation we can use their parking lot, just for parking.
Ooh, and the day of the movie would be?
The day of the movie would be this coming Saturday, the 21st. I mean, it would be held at us. So that's kind of our proposal to see, uh, a couple of things that we would have to have to pull this off, this electricity at the park turn on. Um, and I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
And just to make sure, would this be in the lower park or in the upper park?
Uh, this would be where we're thinking about staging, um, the, the drive-in or movie portion of it would be at the baseball diamond, uh, parking lot so that people can park there and then they bring their chairs out, blankets, whatever, and hoping for good weather this Saturday. Does that make sense?
So the low, so the lower park.
The low, not the greatest.
Not the.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm not sure where the electricity is, but I'm going to find out. I don't know.
Yeah, we're going to have to survey a couple of different sites. I, I know of a few different medical outlets nearby, so.
Any questions? Could I get a motion to approve the, the park display and the movie, movie viewing for October 21st?
I make a motion to have that fact.
Dan made a motion to approve both. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Sure.
Good to go. Thank you. Next is the FCN Bank parking request. So I guess this is, um, not sure if this is a yearly request or twice a year request. We just did one of these in May, but the bank wants to park their medical bus, uh, you guys have the picture, um, on the west side of Progress Street, right there at Fourth, like basically in the back of their parking lot. Um, so I called, uh, Mr. Bruner and asked, um, if they could just park it in their parking lot because they, I mean, their parking lot's right there, but he said that he couldn't do that because, uh, it's not level. So, if anybody wondered why they don't park it in their own parking lot. So, anyway, uh, this is for tomorrow morning.
Looking for a motion?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion or discussion on approving this, uh, request to park their medical bus.
I make a motion to approve.
John made a motion to approve, um, parking the medical bus on the west side of Progress by Fourth. Is there a second? Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Next is disc golf. So, not sure who is going to talk, uh, maybe, um, uh, can you hold on for just a second? Um, is Dustin here? Would you mind talking about what, um, the team did last, uh, week? Is Adam here? No, Adam. Is Adam? Oh, there he is. Or Adam.
Uh, I'm Dustin Young, I'm a resident here in the town of Brookville. Uh, so I participated in a meeting this past Thursday with a group of walkers and a group of disc golfers. Uh, there were six of us in the hole and we kind of went through some ideas that, um, they had presented, that they had thought that could make, uh, in a safer environment for everybody, kind of came to some places where we thought maybe we could make some compromises, maybe move, move the holes, move a few tee boxes, additional signage. Um, the liability signs and cautionary signs for the fact that disc golf is going on in that area, I think is a great idea that everybody agreed with. Um, and then we did come up with quite a few places where we could make changes to make it safer for walkers and disc golfers. So, uh, you have a copy of those, um, fitting those blocks, you know, I've heard a couple of those ones. Uh, but I was really encouraged by the meeting, um, and I hope, I don't necessarily think this is the final, uh, thing to approve, but I think it's very close to start. Uh, very close, so we'll continue to work together to find a compromise.
Um, did you guys by any chance come up with any verbiage or maybe, Adam, do you have any verbiage for the, for the actual signs, like that we could put up if you want to come to the front?
That stuff can be found everywhere. I don't know, um, I would.
You want to, do you want to come up to the mic? I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Um, I think we should probably tie it off, but you guys need, I mean, lawfully to, for the signs to say, sort of the, uh, the liability aspect of it. Um, signs that I've seen anywhere else have just been, hey, cautionary, disc golf, create walking line, this, some of them have had that effect. I mean, the wording on all the signs has been pretty various, but there, there's stuff on the internet where we could sit down and do a review into that process of what we decided to do, if we figure out what we need or what we guys feel is there.
Um, do you think that it would be something that, um, the walkers would be, uh, approved or think it was a good idea to put on, put on every sign, every hole, every tee hole, uh, that walkers have the right of way?
Um, we can do that. It's kind of, um, okay, um, ridicule, but that doesn't mean everybody likes it. I know on every sign now, there is a small, um, triangle with the first one with the desk, you know, things that, hey, watch your walkers. That's already on every sign.
I would feel more comfortable if it said walkers, yes, strictly saying walkers have the right of way, only because it just sounds like a lot of our walkers.
Sure.
I think that would, I just think that would make people feel better.
Yeah, and if the sign was, um, designed in a way, um, that it would be like, no way to play this golf, so I try to make.
The what?
The no way to ever play this golf, like if this was your time playing, so you can move the basic rules, bridge, shoot, and stuff like that, that we can definitely have that in the future.
I mean, I, I don't know how you guys feel, but I just would rather it be very clear to all the walkers than walkers.
That's what I'm thinking.
So I just appreciate what you guys did, first of all. Um, I, I, again, I appreciate you taking your time out of your day to come up with this and, and meet with the walkers and, you know, hear them out. Um, I appreciate this. So thank you a lot. Does anybody else have any questions for these guys?
What, what do you think the next step should be?
Me personally, I think the next step should be kind of get a similar group together, um, the same group and maybe add a few people, uh, and then make sure that Adam can make that meeting because he is the golf course designer. He wasn't able to make that meeting. Um, and just figure out like specifically if we're going to move this tee box, where are we going to move it? Can we put it there? Is it level enough? That kind of stuff. The holes that we think we need to move, where are we going to move them to? You know, how will we make those new holes safe? Um, but I think this is a good place to start.
I would say, look, for anybody that wants to just to go down there and make them walk and move the ground, like, so we can actually see it. And, um, some of the places that tee boxes are, or some of the problem areas, we were kind of limited in design because of, um, not letting go concrete and stuff like that. So some of the new proposed tee boxes are resplastered, probably goes a safety issue due to elevation and, you know, throwing something like this. I mean, if we had a little bit more freedom to level those things out, like, it would be much more comfortable with some of those things. So some of the tee boxes that are on the path, where they're, it was flat and safe and, you know, so, if that makes any sense.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. So, thank you. I, I just want to give an opportunity for other, other public comments, so I, thank you guys, really appreciate it. Is there any other public comment for, um, the disc golf? I mean, this, this is the time, we'll give it two minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, come up and state your name, please.
Sure. My name is Al Abbott, uh, and I assign a percentage of the walkers.
Thank you for coming.
Sure, sure. So I was an athlete originally, uh, October 5th, um, my understanding, and got a pretty vocal layer and so I, I basically, my motivation was to meet with these guys and try and come up with some sort of compromise. So I got some maps of the course and kind of they, I thought maybe some of the changes could be and, you know, the meeting went very well. Everybody was very civilized and, you know, it was a very good meeting and I think we pretty much changed or agreed, you know, on most of the things that we proposed. Um, I, I agree with, it was Adam who was just not hearing. You know, meeting Adam at the course there and just walking the course and, you know, marking everything, the, the new holes ought to be or the tee marks ought to be would probably be the best solution. And so, you know, maybe after that meeting, you know, then we come up with sort of a final proposal at that point that maybe you could, you know, approve or disapprove the plan, you know?
That sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Randy. Uh, working out at a golf course, volunteer about four hundred hours a year, under one hundred a bit. But anyway, uh, I'm out at the golf course, what I did, and I frisbee golf too, of my kids, my grandkids. I've got five kids and fifteen grandkids, so we frisbee golf one to two days a week. So, you know, it's three generations, you know, you're out here with your kids and your grandkids and they're all having a good time, but I've been playing frisbee golf for about thirty years. Uh, most of the time I played out at Miami University because I, I retired from there and I worked there, but, uh, equals sixteen, eighteen thousand students out there. I've never hit anybody with frisbee and, you know, in all those years, but it's just frisbee. If you get hit by a frisbee, it's like, oh, man, what the heck, you know, sorry about that. It's not like it hit my golf ball, like somebody walked from range and put it in hospitals, it's not frisbee. In most cases, uh, most frisbee players, they, before they throw, they, they look for people in the sugar and hit somebody walking across or anything, but it's just such a good program, you know, and that's such a nice sport you, if you guys have, it's great to get out with your kids and your grandkids and just play frisbee golf. I know there's some issues with safety, issues and stuff, and there's some older people out there. I'm seventy years old myself and I could say, I play golf, frisbee golf, I pick a ball. I spend about thirty hours a week just playing sports. You know, I'm not golfing and frisbee and I'm not that and pick a ball, but like I said, the safety issue on frisbees is just frisbee. The chances of getting hurt is, is extremely small. So I just wanted to get up here and say, you know, from my perspective, you know, very low risk, uh, this, this course here, you could use for another thirty-four years and you have a generation after a generation enjoying time with the kids and the grandkids and stuff. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to make a comment? Nothing heard? So, based off of what we've heard, is there any more discussion from the council or any motions or, I mean, the motion on the table at this point was to remove it. Um, that was from our last, uh, meeting two weeks ago. Uh, so is there an amended motion or a new motion for tonight?
I make a motion to maintain the course in its current status until Adam and the, uh, group of disc golfers and a group of walkers could come back and present a new proposal, you know, a new course layout for the town council.
Curtis made a motion to keep the course as is until we get a final approval. I'd like to, well, can I just add that, that this, this team meets next week? I don't want to lose momentum on this. Um, that this team meets next week and so that we can have maybe a proposal at our following meeting, which is the following week. Um, that's fine. Is that okay? John? Okay. Uh, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. So to the six and now the seven, Adam, if, uh, let's see, are you guys, maybe, do you want to get together after this or do you want us to propose a, a time where you could meet or do you have a time now that, uh, you're available, Adam, mostly or mostly in the evenings or?
Yeah, evenings are, sometime after next Wednesday would be great.
Sometimes after next Wednesday? Okay.
I mean, I can meet directly after if you want. We can just continue at the office this evening, but.
Oh, that's okay.
I'm just going out of town for fall break and all.
Of course. Uh, okay, so maybe next Thursday? Uh, could the, could mostly of you members that, that went last time, could you meet Thursday? Maybe at the town hall at like six? Is that, is that okay? Um, Justin? Or Justin?
You want to meet at the course at six, so we can walk the course?
Sorry. Yes, thank you. The course.
Can that work out? Maybe a little earlier. It's getting dark.
Can you, can you meet any earlier than six?
Sure.
Like five?
Is everyone in that unit ready to meet next?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, we can, we can correspond.
Just figure it out.
Sure.
I just want to make sure it's before the next meeting so that we can.
Definitely time to walk before it gets dark.
Right, okay. So we'll just, Adam, if you want to start that, initiate that, that'd be great, and then we'll just go in there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the town manager job description. Okay, next is the town manager job description. So this was something that was, uh, submitted last, I don't know if it was our last meeting, was it our last meeting maybe? Um, for the job description for the town manager to see if we could figure out what kind of, uh, duties that we wanted the town manager to do. Um, some of these are pretty involved, so does the council have any comments, discussions, suggestions on the duties and functions that are on these, these papers? Maybe we just concentrate on the first two pages. Of course, the, the goal is to then, um, announce this position, uh, internally first and then if we don't get anyone that applies, that we, uh, post it on in the paper and then So if there's no discussion, is there a motion on the table or? I mean, at, at the last meeting, we signed the ordinance to establish the position, so the position is established. Just need to put someone in it.
I made a motion to approve. How's Kirk doing today?
Curtis made a motion to approve, um, and if this has not been reviewed yet by the HR, I just wanted to see if we liked it or this is kind of what we were thinking of because I, I really would like the HR to look at it first also, because Andy, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, so I was just going to say, to one, this, I think the one that was most recently saved, shared by Gina, was the original one that I saw. So there is one that I had edits on.
Oh, sorry.
And I, I don't believe I've already seen that one. Um, so.
So that, yes, that, there were a couple. It wasn't, it's not anything major, I don't think, Andy, right? I mean, I think, I think maybe if we, if we look at this and just say, generally speaking, we agree with most of these duties and let's push it to, um, New Focus, HR, and see what she thinks, maybe that'll give us all a little bit more time to also look more at the duties and make sure Andy's suggestions are in here. I don't think I've, um, asked Gina for her input if she has any. Um, I just wanted to see if, generally speaking, this is kind of where we wanted to go with the duties. Like I said, just page one and two really. I'm not sure about three and all the rest of it. I, hopefully, um, HR Focus will have some input onto that.
So you want a motion to send it to HR?
Yes, to.
I make that motion with Andy's edits.
Okay. So Curtis made a motion to send this with Andy's edits to HR Focus for further, um, clarification. Um, is there a second? Dan, do you want to second it?
Hmm?
Do you want to talk about it?
Well, I just, I just got it thirty minutes ago. I don't, I don't know why we need to react so quickly to this. I know it's been going on for a month and a half, but.
Well, we sent the ordinance at the last meeting, so this is the next step. And this is just to give it to HR Focus to review.
Yeah, well, seven.
I'm sorry?
I'll second that.
Dan, Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried, three to one.
I did just send out the version that I had, that's on, and it isn't anything.
Okay. Okay, so we'll send that to New Focus. Okay. Next is the lien paperwork. So this is, um, a lien, uh, that I'm supposed to sign based off of what we're doing here. This is for the address at 240 Cleaver Street. Um, this is in violation of, of ordinance 2007-1, property maintenance code of the town of Brookville, that the amount claimed is $4,100 for expenses incurred by the town of Brookville to bring the property into compliance with the ordinance. This is for, um, uh, labor equipment and materials, uh, to bring the property into compliance. And from what I understand, we have, we sent the, all the proper notices to the homeowner to come into compliance and they did not, and so this, uh, so then we paid to get it cleaned up and this is now. And this is now putting a lien on our property in order to get reimbursed. Did I say that right? Okay, great. So I guess I'll be just asking the council for approval to go ahead and sign this and send this out and file this with the recorder.
I made a good motion.
John made a motion to approve me to sign the notice of intention to hold statutory lien on William 4th at 335 Helmut Lane, Alexandria, Virginia. Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Highland Township fire contract. So this is the fire contract that is annually signed for January 1st, 2024, through December 31st, 2024, for the Brookville Fire Department to provide fire service to Highland Township for $3,000 per year. And it's already been signed by the township trustee and board. Oh, there's two, on the $26,000. This is a normal annual contract that our fire department provides to Butler, Highland, and Brookville Townships. Last year, the Highland Township, the contract was for $2,500. So this is an increase of $500. Is there a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make that motion.
John made a motion to approve the contract for $3,000 for Highland Township. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is building permit number 995 for Melvin and Patricia Scott. Any questions? Is there a motion to approve? We have to formally approve it.
I made a motion.
John made a motion to approve the building permit for Melvin and Patricia Scott at 339 East 11th Street for a changed roof line. Is there a second? Curtis seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Next is the building permit number 996 for Don Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, and I assume who was doing the building, Tom Stockhoff, was in the institution to submit this permit. They want to county first, however, the approval, but the way they look to position apply doesn't mean the setback requirements. So they're going to have to obtain a variance from the county. However, Kristin, the agency director, wants to know how the council feels about the variance. And if you are in a, in a, in agreement or disagreement with that whole variance. She would like to know how the council goes along to them submitting the variance.
What does that mean?
So, the property line, yeah, sorry, it's kind of a bad drop, I put it in the back. So they only have ten foot setbacks against this property line there next to Sunny Avenue. There's supposed to be fifteen. And then the other property line is only a fifteen foot setback, and it should be worth five.
So I went back and actually looked at this property, and there are those big, I think they're sewer line things. I'm not sure. Tim hasn't looked at this. But there are two, there's one kind of a big thing and one smaller. And it just seems like our pipes go through underneath this structure. And I think that if that's the case, then we don't approve, or we, it's just something that I think Tim would probably say no. But I'm not sure with those, with those main hall covers, what's underneath those. I'd just rather wait for Tim to take a look at it before we-
We're saying it's bigger by one front, but the county's only, doesn't define that front line as a street frontage.
The street is on the naughty side. That's their driveway.
But that's not, that's not the, it's not much of streets and hard drive.
Right, right.
And so the county said, for it to be considered a yard frontage, it defines it differently than what they're finding here. And the county also allows an exemption, or an exception, if twenty-five or seven more of the buildings on that block are closer. And all of these are close to the ten or fifteen foot setback. And so I think that Don would talk to the county to see if that exception would apply versus assuming the variance. And with Doc, Tim, make sure that there's no utility running underneath there. If there are, then it changes the story. But I recommend that Don go back to see if there's an exception to that, if they're actually applying the right frontage to it based off their code.
Where did you get this thirty-five feet?
It's R1 required.
It's, oh, it's R1.
Yeah, half of this lot, right on the ground line is G1. G1 drops down to ten to fifteen feet. So half of this property is G1 or general business, and the other one is R1.
Right.
But it's, I would argue that it's not a frontage right there. And that if it were a frontage, then they could apply that exception to it of twenty-five or seven more of the buildings being closer than what they allow, which is majority of Brookville. All the buildings are closer than what the zoning code would allow.
I move that we put this on hold until Tim gets back and until Don talks to the county about an exception.
Sir.
John seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, and next is the ordinance 2023-14, ordinance amending property maintenance code. So this is something we talked about, I think, at our last meeting. Or did we talk about this? No, we haven't talked about this. So what we saw in our maintenance, property maintenance code is the Board of Appeals process was a little complicated and convoluted. And so what Andy did is streamlined it. Do you want to talk about the changes, Andy, or?
The initial issue that Tim brought up to me is that there was this Board of Appeals appointed by the chief appointing authority. But then there's no definition for who the chief appointing authority was. And so I'm discussing with Tim, is this, let's just look at the whole appeals process. And it's simpler to just say the appeal is going to be brought before this board, which is how others have been able, oh, the chickens, that was, she asked to be in front of the town council. So there are other areas in the town ordinance where the appeal was made to the town council. So that was the idea. And then I just went through 150, 127, and changing that board makeup to the town council, whereas in this other three-member board, got rid of a bunch of things, alternate members, chairperson, things like that. The rules regarding extension, many members remain. If any of the town council members had any association with the appeal, they'd obviously have to abstain. C, I want to determine how witnesses provided to the property owner. D, two outlines procedure requirements for when documentation needs to be turned in to the town council, has plenty of time to review those documents before the appeal serves. And the basic rudimentary, how hearing will be handled, witnesses, cross-examination, things like that. I just thought I'd do it. E, about a request for postponing hearing and after the board decision. And they can petition to either Franklin County or the court's review. And H is to stay in enforcement. Other than, if it's other, if it's not imminent danger issue, then if someone files an appeal, any enforcement of that would be stayed until the appeals were occurred. And then if they filed, we go to court. If it were upheld, then that would be sales.
So basically, if we, if the town sends them a notice of non-compliance, they have twenty days to file an appeal, and that will be heard by the town council.
And what would happen to this setup?
Right, which I don't think changed. Well, I don't know exactly, but anyway. And we don't have to do anything as a council to-
And again, this is just as to the property maintenance code. So this is, this is only the process for chapter 150.
I think it makes sense to me. Anything streamlined is better, I think. So people know where to make their appeals as we try to enforce the town code cleanup properties. So if there's any other, no discussion or any other questions? Entertained a motion to approve this ordinance 2023-14, ordinance amended chapter 150 of the Code of Ordinances.
I made a good motion.
John made a motion to approve the ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
Dan seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. It's everybody's signature. Next is the Franklin County, is that right? Franklin County Economic Development Appointment. John, are you still interested in doing that?
Yeah.
Did you put a paper? There's no, there's no sign.
Now, once you name and appoint a house member.
Okay. So in the absence of finding a citizen, that we'd really like to find a citizen to serve on this board for the Franklin County Redevelopment Commission. John has volunteered to serve. But if there's anybody out there that does want to serve on this board, please let one of us know, Gina, and we'll make that happen. So John has volunteered to serve. Is there a motion to appoint him as our representative on this commission?
I made a good motion.
Dan made a motion to appoint John on the Franklin County Redevelopment Commission. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Also, also be good.
Thank you, Curtis, for seconding. All in favor? All opposed? John abstains. Thank you, John. And that's all we have here. Does anybody have any? Let's talk about Winter Wonderland. So we've had a great Winter Wonderland a couple, two years? Three years, two, three years? In a row, Kathy Pelser headed up. And unfortunately, we haven't had anybody to step up to take over responsibility in that program, which is very sad for a lot of people. So we have had a couple people reach out and ask questions about how to do it. So we're going to sit down with them next week. And hopefully, we'll have someone that says, I'll be in charge. And that we'll move that thing along. But I think what normally happens is we accept applications, and then the people decorate their trees by, I think it's the fifteenth of November. And then there's some kind of golf cart parade. I'm sorry, I haven't really, okay. So hopefully, at our next meeting, we'll have more information. And if we can figure something out next week, we'll put it out on Facebook to figure out a place where we submit applications or who we're going to submit those to or-
It's actually this week, or is it this week or this end?
Yes, I know.
Oh, God.
But we weren't going to put any information out until we actually met with these wonderful people who have volunteered to just learn more. And hopefully, one of them will then take the reins and go. But we'll hopefully have more information at our next meeting.
Oh, I thought you-
Yes, for, to push that out as a final, this is how we're doing it. Unless anybody has another suggestion, if one of you guys, does anybody on the board want to, or have any other suggestions or? I guess that's all we have for Winter Wonderland. So all, everybody that wants to do a tree, just hold on. I hope they'll be, yes, ma'am, if you'd like to say something, please come up and introduce yourself.
My name's Randy Suscater, and I did it during last year. And it's an awesome program, so anyone who will. I do have a monitoring request, though. I know we were having problems with lights getting cut. I had some really expensive lights being clipped to the point I couldn't fix them.
Like, like vandalized?
Yes. We had a lot of problems with that last year with jerseys and stuff. And I didn't know if maybe the police department could make some chores through there or anything. Because I know I had three really expensive, basically light trans get cut to the point they couldn't fix. That's fine. I just, if they could get some security down there, maybe to help and control. I know I was hearing other people, lights were getting cut. And it's an awesome program for the kids. To go down and it's close to home, take your kids there, and it's a lot of fun. But we do need security down there.
We'll see what we can do. Thank you. Sorry about your legs.
That's fine.
Are there any other public comments about anything that we've discussed tonight? Any other issues from the council? Gina? All entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Sorry. John and Curtis made motions to adjourn. Is there, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. Beings adjourned.